Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, March 1st, 2020. The time is 1:00 PM, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District 8. Our presenter is Jonah Rogoff.
Great, good morning, Commissioners. This is an application by Vanderbilt Atlantic Holdings LLC for a zoning map amendment from M11 and R6B districts to a C63X district and zoning text amendments to map an MIH area and allow street wall location flexibility in order to facilitate an 18-story mixed-use development with 316 dwelling units, 95 of which would be affordable, as well as approximately 51,000 square feet of retail and 7,500 square feet of community facility space. Next slide, please. The project area is located in the Prospect Heights neighborhood of Brooklyn within Community District 8 and situated just to the south of Fort Greene and Clinton Hill. Next slide. The surrounding area largely contains residential with community facilities on side streets. Local commercial uses are concentrated along Vanderbilt Avenue, a 100-foot wide corridor, and Fulton Street, one block to the north. Atlantic Avenue, 120-foot wide corridor, and major east-west thoroughfare contains primarily heavy service-based uses such as auto repair, building supply stores, and self-storage. Residential uses predominantly consist of pre-war three- to six-story apartment buildings and one- to two-family rowhouse-style homes, many of which are located in the Prospect Heights historic district to the south. There are also taller apartment buildings near Atlantic Avenue, including 550 Vanderbilt, 17-story building located directly southwest of the site that was constructed in 2017 and is part of Pacific Park, or formerly known as Atlantic Yards, a 22-acre mixed-use and multi-phase development project overseen by the state. And then while still under construction, 809 Atlantic Avenue directly north of the development site will be developed with a new 29-story, 312-foot-tall tower with residential offices and retail. Most of the development site is zoned M11, a district that extends along Atlantic Avenue from Fifth Avenue to Nostrand Avenue, although the M11 portion west of the site is part of Pacific Park, which is governed by a state-based general project plan and can override zoning. The M11 portion stretching from Vanderbilt Avenue to Nostrand Avenue is part of the M-Crown Study Area, an ongoing neighborhood planning effort led by Community Board 8 that seeks to support housing and job growth. M11 is a low-density manufacturing district that permits industrial and commercial uses up to 1FAR and certain community facilities up to 2.4FAR. Buildings in M11 districts may have a street wall up to 30 feet in height, after which heights are governed by the sky exposure plane. M11 districts also have high parking requirements, generally requiring one space per 300 square feet of office or retail and one space per 1,000 square feet of industrial. Much of the surrounding area has been subject to department-sponsored contextual rezonings, including the area-wide rezonings of Prospect Heights in 1994 and Fort Greene/Clinton Hill in 2007, which both mapped R6B districts across most side streets to preserve the area's built character while mapping R7A with commercial overlays along Vanderbilt Avenue, Fulton Street, and Atlantic Avenue to accommodate modest growth. R6B is a residential district that typically allows up to 2FAR base heights between 30 and 40 feet and building heights up to 50 feet, while R7A is a residential district that allows up to 4FAR base heights between 40 and 65 feet and building heights up to 85 feet with a qualifying ground floor. The R7A district mapped along Atlantic Avenue is within a voluntary inclusionary housing area, which allows a higher residential FAR of 4.6, as well as base and building heights to increase by 10 feet to support and accommodate affordable housing. And then directly to the north of the site is an R9 district with a C25 overlay, which was mapped as part of the 809 Atlantic Avenue private application approved in 2019. Directly northwest of the site is a C63A commercial district, which was mapped as part of the 470 Vanderbilt Avenue private application approved in 2009, which allows up to 8.5FAR for residential, 6FAR for commercial, and then base heights between 60 and 125 feet with building heights up to 175 feet. Next slide, please. And just to help illustrate the surrounding area, here's a bird's-eye perspective looking northwest with the development site shaded in red. On the left side is 550 Vanderbilt, as well as other sites within the Pacific Park area. Across the street from the site is 809 Atlantic and 470 Vanderbilt Avenue, a high-density loft-style office building with a new mixed-use building located on Fulton Street. This area is well-served by public transit. Approximately three avenue blocks away is Atlantic Terminal, a major public transit hub with access to the Long Island Railroad, 10 subway lines, and numerous buses. Within a half-mile are the Bergen Street and Granada Plaza subway stations providing access to the 2 and 3 trains, and within a quarter-mile is the Clinton/Washington subway station with access to the C train, located one block to the north on Fulton Street. The B45, B65, and B69 buses are also accessible within a couple of blocks. And in addition, Vanderbilt Avenue contains an active two-way bike lane, and there are four city bike stations within a block of the site. Next slide. The proposed project area and development site are co-terminus, located on the western part of Block 1122, which is bounded by Atlantic Avenue to the north, Underhill Avenue to the east, Pacific Street to the south, and Vanderbilt Avenue to the west. The development site is a 38,800-square-foot zoning lot comprised of seven tax lots, which include a McDonald's fast-food establishment on Lots 1, 68, and 71, two- and three-story residential buildings on Lots 69 and 70, an open storage area on Lot 9, and a three-story mixed-use building containing a ground floor or a restaurant with residential above on Lot 10. Next slide. Now, just for a few photos of the site and the context. The top-left photo is a view of the site's Vanderbilt Avenue frontage, showing the McDonald's fast-food restaurant and accessory parking that wraps around the street's frontage. The top-right photo is a view of the site's Atlantic Avenue frontage, looking west toward Atlantic Terminal in downtown Brooklyn. The bottom-left photo is a view of the site from Atlantic Avenue, looking southwest. Next slide. On the top-left is a view of the site, looking northeast from Vanderbilt Avenue, and on the top-right is a view of the Pacific Street context with the existing residential buildings on Lots 69 and 70 shown in the left side of the photo. And then the bottom-left photo provides a view of the Vanderbilt Avenue corridor, looking north towards Atlantic Avenue, with 550 Vanderbilt on the left and the construction of 809 Atlantic in the center. Next slide. Lastly, just a few views of the Atlantic Avenue corridor from Vanderbilt Avenue. The left photo is a view, looking east, showing the storage and service-based uses on the south side of Atlantic, and then on the north side of Atlantic, the new mixed-use buildings. And then the photo on the right is a view, looking west, showing the loft-style office building at 470 Vanderbilt Avenue. Next slide. The applicant proposes an 18-story mixed-use building totaling approximately 343,000 square feet, or 8.83FAR, which would be comprised of 316 units, 95 of which would be affordable, as well as approximately 51,000 square feet of commercial and 7,500 square feet of community facility space, which would both be distributed on the first and second stories. Next slide. As shown in the massing diagram, the applicant proposes several base heights and setbacks, with the buildings massing oriented near the corner of Vanderbilt and Atlantic Avenues. First, along Pacific Street, within the portion of the site remaining R6B, the street wall would rise to a height of 40 feet, above which a 15-foot setback would be provided, before rising to a height of 51 feet, and then 65 feet within 25 feet of the R6B boundary. Along Vanderbilt Avenue, the base height would be 113 feet tall, then setback 10 feet from Vanderbilt Avenue and 30 feet from Pacific Street, before rising to 144 feet, above which another 30-two-foot setback would be provided, before the building reaches its maximum height of 195 feet. Next slide. And just zooming out for a moment, I wanted to share a view of the proposed development, shaded in white, with the nearby existing and future-built context, including 550 Vanderbilt standing at 201 feet and 809 Atlantic standing at 312 feet. In the opaque shading, directly west of the site is an illustrative full build-out of Pacific Park, which we note would anticipate future towers along Atlantic Avenue that would also exceed the height of the proposed development. Next slide. So turning the focus back to the proposed ground floor plan, the applicant proposes an eight-foot setback along Atlantic and Vanderbilt Avenues to provide more sidewalk space. The proposed community facility space will be located on Pacific Street, along with a curb-cut and entrance ramp to a 90-space accessory parking area in the building's cellar. Next slide. To facilitate the proposal, the applicant seeks a zoning map amendment and two zoning text amendments, first to map an MIH area, and second to add a new section to allow more flexible street wall location. Next slide. First, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment from M11 and R6B districts to a C63X district. From Vanderbilt Avenue, the C63X district would extend 200 feet along Atlantic and 125 feet along Pacific Street. C63X is a high-density contextual commercial district with residential district equivalent of R9X. When paired with an MIH area, C63X districts allow residential up to 9.7FAR, community facilities up to 9FAR, and commercial uses up to 6FAR. Base heights can be between 60 and 145 feet on narrow streets and between 105 and 145 feet on or within 100 feet of wide streets. With a qualifying ground floor, building heights may reach up to 195 feet along a narrow street or 205 feet along a wide street. Parking is generally required for 40% of the non-income-restricted dwelling units and optional for commercial uses. Additionally, the district allows multiple stories of commercial with a wide range of retail, offices, and other service-based uses, while mixed-use buildings on wide streets are required to maintain non-residential use, fronting the ground floor. And when paired with MIH areas, R6B districts allow up to 2.2FAR for residential, as well as base heights and building heights up to 45 and 55 feet, respectively, with a qualifying ground floor. Next slide. So due to the proposed project area being split between the C63X and R6B zoning districts, the development site would yield a blended FAR of 8.83. In particular, a 45-foot-wide portion of the site would remain in the R6B district along Pacific Street, which would limit the building height to 65 feet within 25 feet of the C6 district, and thus ensure transition or step-down in height along Pacific. The applicant also intends to utilize the split-lot zoning rules to apply the proposed zoning to Lot 10 along Atlantic Avenue, which is partially outside of the zoning area. Next slide. Second, the applicant requests a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area pursuant to option 2, which would require 30% of the residential floor area be affordable at an average of 80% of the area median income or below. Due to the substantial increase in residential capacity being proposed, the MIH area would extend over the R6B portion, covering the entire portion of the development site. Next slide. Third, the applicant seeks a zoning text amendment to create a new section which would apply special street wall rules to zoning lots with frontage on Atlantic Avenue within C63X districts in Brooklyn's Community District 8. The underlying regulations for C63X require that the street wall for mixed-use developments be located at the street line for nearly the entire frontage. The proposed text would allow the site to set back the street wall facing Atlantic Avenue an additional eight feet and reduce the street wall location required to 70% of the aggregate width of the frontage. This would essentially enable the sidewalk to effectively widen from the current width of 12 feet, as shown in the photo above, to a proposed width of 20 feet, in an effort to improve the streetscape condition. Next slide. Lastly, we'd like to note that the project area is located in the M-Crown Study Area on its western edge. As part of the department's framework, this site was identified as an appropriate location for high-density commercial, due to the proximity to public transit, while also being at the intersection of two wide and active thoroughfares. Next slide. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonah. Commissioner Rampershad.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. When this come back to us, can you just ask the applicant to provide breakdown, unit breakdown, how many three-bedroom, two-bedroom, and also the affordability breakdown? And one last request, since they're looking to change the street wall location, if they can provide some additional views at the street level? Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I'd echo Commissioner Rampershad's request, particularly for the street-level views. I'm nervous about street wall widenings that don't match up with their surroundings, and sometimes you end up with spaces that feel vacant in front of the building. So I think we need to apply some care, particularly to the Atlantic Avenue side here, which is just, you know, a portion of the block, not the whole block, unlike the Vanderbilt Avenue frontage. But my question has to do with matching this up to the M-Crown framework. I think the last time we talked about this, I had a presentation about it, it was maybe a year and a half ago, and the information we had then was that city planning, there was recognition between the community board and city planning that this particular site was appropriate for high density, but what high density meant, there was some difference of opinion. But my understanding at that time was that DCP was targeting densities of 7 to 8FAR, and we're a little bit higher than that here, and no doubt even further away from what the community board would like to see there. So could you take us through your thinking that got to this proposed density? I see how it makes complete sense if you're looking toward Pacific Park, but you have to look the other way as well, which is a much lower-density neighborhood. We need to make sure the two are knit together.
Sure, Commissioner. Jeff, do you mind pulling up the second-to-last slide with the M-Crown framework? I believe it's slide 18? First, I just want to say that we took a lot of great care towards what potential density could be applied here. We, so I think, generally speaking, we see this particular node as being very active and compared to other parts of M-Crown, having benefiting from greater access to transit. Vanderbilt Avenue is 100 feet wide, Atlantic Avenue is 120 feet wide, so we considered this corner to be able to accommodate some additional height and density. Broadly speaking, we did feel that this site shouldn't necessarily mirror what's on the other sides of the street, but should be more of a transition or step-down from what's being considered to the west at Pacific Park. That being said, you know, we're still considering the proposal. This is kind of an off-the-shelf tool that we felt matches, you know, what we believe is appropriate in the framework. A portion of the site would remain under R6B, which would provide a number of guarantees for height transitions. In the framework, we didn't specify the exact density. We wanted to be a little bit loose in that regard, so this is, in a way, like a test case to see how a district kind of fits within that. But I could also bring this back to the applicant, have them speak to that. I know this is an issue that, you know, that they've been working closely with the community board on, they presented to them, as well as, I believe, the North Prospect Heights Association, so we'll be following the conversations as well.
Okay, so will we, certainly. One last question that has to do with the affordability option. I see that they are targeting option 2 here. I wonder why not option 1 as well? I think that area median incomes in this community district are right at the borderline, and I can see that there might be a real appetite for some option 1 here. Realize that's not our choice, but I would hope that we'd have the opportunity to at least provide that flexibility, so that, you know, the affordable units here really do meet what this evolving neighborhood needs.
I'll check with the applicant team on that. I believe it was part of an effort to maximize the number of affordable units, so they decided to take that.
That's always the trade-off, right? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
Did Commissioner Rampershad have a follow-up question, because his hand is still up?
Oh, I don't.
No, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Levin's question about the sidewalk. Is it the intention that eventually, as other sites develop along Atlantic, that the 20-foot sidewalk would continue, so that you would have a 20-foot sidewalk along the full length? And secondly, are there other street wall regulations that are being imposed in terms of transparency, in terms of subdividing the spaces, so it's not just sort of one huge bank, but it'll be a series of smaller retailers?
So Commissioner, to your first question, we absolutely view this 20-foot-wide standard as something that could be applied elsewhere along Atlantic, both consistent with what we're considering in M-Crown, but also just good planning practice, because although Atlantic is very wide, we wanted to ensure at least a 20-foot-wide sidewalk to, you know, support the vision and the activity that could be there. To your second question, I need, sorry, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, I was just wondering whether, there are two other things that would enhance the walkability of the street there. One would be, obviously, transparency regulations, so that we have at least 50% transparency, and secondly, to have the applicant subdivide the retail spaces, so that it isn't taken over by one large bank or a pharmacy that tends to bling off the street.
So to the first part of your question, there are a number of transparency requirements that kick in when you provide a qualifying ground floor, and I know the applicant intends to provide many of those. Let me, can I get back to you on that? And then on the second part of that, I can also touch base with the applicant. I don't believe that they have a, you know, commercial tenant in mind, but I think that they're trying to provide some degree of flexibility, which C6 would allow.
Is that something that we have the ability to impose or not?
I can say that as a general policy matter, we do not choose to do it, believing that the retail market evolves, and we don't want to lock ourselves in in the way that, so that we end up with a so-ho-no-ho type of situation. And so we tend to allow retail uses without specifying they have to be of this type, but not of other types. We have had communities say we want bicycle repair but not bicycle sales, and we find that that micromanagement is just not consistent with a dynamic and changing retail environment.
Yeah, but I do think what is consistent with a dynamic and changing retail environment is a multiplicity of retail, rather, you know, I'm just, obviously, I'm happy to see these large banks and pharmacies because of the way they don't actually use the retail frontage for display. You know, it just becomes a blank facade, and if there was a way to deter that kind of thing, it would be really helpful.
And let's see, Commissioner Marine.
Good afternoon, everyone. Joseph, thank you for the presentation. I also shared some concerns that were expressed by the three last commissioners, that's both Rampershad, Levin, and of course Bernie. One was the experience walking down the street, so those would help out in terms of understanding that, but that also plays into the 20-foot setback, which I happen to like. I think that the widening of the sidewalk on Atlantic Avenue is wide, is a wide street, there are a lot of people. I am just, again, concerned, as Commissioner Levin is, with what happens with the adjacent building, you know, close by, is it that we're setting back this entire block, or are we going to have a jock through? How is that going to affect the urban experience and the urban landscape? And then, you know, to me, I understand that they're trying to maximize the number of units in terms of the affordability, but I would say that the lower end of the spectrum is where we find the need, more need for housing, and of course, the community will speak on that further, if they haven't spoken already. And then lastly, oh no, I think I covered it, lastly, with the 20-foot setback, which just the concern of how that's going to feel for the urban, for the pedestrian experience as you walk, what other buildings are not set back? You know, some of there are not set back, like a gas station or fast-food restaurant, you won't feel the impact of a building, you know, with a wall coming down onto the sidewalk. So thank you, and I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, lots of useful comments. Not seeing any other hands, this application is certified.
Thank you.
Hey, the second item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District 14. Our presenter is Joy Razor.
Thanks, Ryan. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Next slide, please. The application is a joint venture between Brisa Builders Development LLC and God's Battalion of Prayer Properties, Inc. The project area is located at 426 through 444 Beach 67th Street and encompasses eight lots in the Arvern neighborhood of Community District 14. The applicants are requesting a map amendment from R4A to R6, as well as a text amendment to establish an MIH area in order to facilitate the construction of a 100% affordable senior housing building and a charter school. Next slide, please. As you can see on this map, the project area is located in Arvern and is located approximately three miles from downtown Far Rockaway. The area is well-served by public transit and is located two blocks from the Beach 67th Street A Station. It's serviced by Q22, QM17, and the Q52 SBS bus lines, as well as the Rockaway East New York City ferry shuttle. However, despite proximity to transit, the project area is not located within the transit zone, though it is within the 1% annual chance floodplain. Next slide. The project area is outlined here in black, with the development site outlined in red. The surrounding area includes residential uses ranging from one-to-three-story, single, two-family, and multifamily buildings, as well as community facility uses, which include Public School 42 to the east, as well as a handful of small churches. Commercial uses line Beach Channel Drive to the south and include local retail and restaurants, including a surf shop, hair braiding salon, Chinese restaurant, pizza shop, and deli. Next slide. For additional context, here's an aerial map of the project area. And the project area is located at the mid-block flanking Beach 67th Street in a low-to-medium-density neighborhood. The development site to the east consists of lots 12 through 24, and the proposed district would be mapped 230 feet from Beach Channel Drive. The site is improved with a two-story church, a three-story residential building, a community garden, an approximately 30-space parking lot, and vacant lands. The co-applicant, God's Battalion of Prayer Properties, owns all of the properties within the development site. Block 16041, Lot 6, to the west, is improved with an eight-story resort nursing home constructed in 1974. The proposed district would be mapped to a depth of 100 feet from Beach Channel Drive, although there are no plans currently to redevelop the nursing home at this time. Next slide. Here's some site photos showing existing conditions of the project area, looking northeast and southeast along Beach 67th Street. In the top-left corner is an existing three-story residence. The top-right shows the parking lot adjacent to the church, and the bottom-left picture shows the existing two-story Battalion Pentecostal Assembly Church. There are no current improvements planned for the church, and the building will remain the same. Next slide, please. This slide shows views of the project area looking This slide shows views of the project area looking west across Beach 67th Street. In the top left corner, you can see some of the existing detached homes. In the top right, you can see another home with the eight story resort nursing home in the distance. And the bottom left shows the back of the nursing home looking west across Beach 67th Street. Next slide. These site photos give you a better context of the nursing home, which rises to eight stories. And these all taken along the frontage of Beach 68th Street. And you can see views looking northeast, east and southeast along Beach 68th. Next slide. The applicants are proposing two new buildings on site. Building one would be a nine story 60,000 square foot, 100% affordable residential building containing 84 heirs units financed through HPD Sarah program. And these would consist of studio and one bedroom units. Building two would consist of an 11 story approximately 72,000 square foot charter school, serving up to 950 kindergarten through sixth grade students. As mentioned previously, the existing two story church at the far left would remain the same. However, the church is providing unused air rights from lot 24 to the rest of the development site to help facilitate the development of the proposed buildings. Next slide. Here's a plan view of the development site looking east. Circulation into the church and the residential buildings are indicated by the blue and yellow arrows. Nine parking spaces would be provided for the residences and six would be provided for the school. Entrances for pedestrians and parking would be located along Beach 67th Street. Next slide. Here's a ground floor plan showing entrances into both of the buildings and also to the parking areas. Because the project's located within the 1% annual chance floodplain, all interior spaces below base floodplain would be flood proofed in accordance with appendix G of the building code. And no habitable spaces would be provided below the base flood elevation. Next slide, please. On this site, slide, you can see some of the proposed programming within the charter school. The entrance would be on the ground floor and storage would be in the basement. A gymnasium cafeteria and library proposed on the floors two through five, and the upper floors would be proposed for classrooms. A small outdoor space is proposed on the seventh floor to comply with the sky exposure plane. Next slide, please. And here are some renderings of both of the buildings. On the left, you can see the proposed nine story airs building and on the right is the 11 story charter school. Next slide. The applicant is proposing two actions, including a zoning map amendment from R4A to R6. And the proposed district would be mapped at the mid block north of Beach Channel Drive. R6 provides medium density and a maximum FAR of 2.43. The project area is close to transit and immediately surrounded by medium density buildings, including the eight story nursing home within the project area and the five story public school 42. Beach 67th Street and Beach 66th Street are both wide streets and an R6 district already exists south of the project area and includes the Arvern by the Sea Development. Next slide. And from here, you can get a better sense of the already existing R6 district map to the south. It covers a large swath of the southern shoreline. Next slide. The applicant's also seeking a zoning text amendments map, MIH options one and two. Option one would provide 25% of housing floor area, an average of 60% AMI or $61,440 for a family of three. MIH option two would provide 30% of housing floor area, an average of 80% AMI or about $81,920 for a family of three. As mentioned, the residential building is proposed to be 100% affordable through HPD subsidized heirs program. And these units would be provided at an average of 60% AMI. For reference, the median household income in the Rockways is around $61,650. Next slide, please. To summarize, Brisa Builders Development LLC and God's Battalion of Prayer Properties, Inc. are seeking a map amendment from an R4A district to an R6 and a text amendment to establish an MIH area in order to facilitate the development of a nine story, 100% affordable heirs building and an 11 story charter school. The existing church within the development site would remain the same. This concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Joy. Looking to Commissioner Levin.
So waiting for other hand, I was waiting for Commissioner Raffershad to get his hand up. Should have waited another, another second. Um, yeah, you know, withhold any judgment on the density that's proposed until we've heard from the community board, board and the borough president, but I observed that this is a pretty dramatic change of scale before its surroundings and the, you know, the R6 district that you point to is bearing nearby, or at least honest enough to point out, you know, they have to go to the wide angle map to see that it's really quite far away. But so that, that's my biggest question here, but we'll wait to see on that one is the, but what does ZCFR say about this? I mean, I know that ZCFR is, will, would prohibit nursing homes in the 1% flood zone. Heirs is not a nursing home, but it is still a very vulnerable population. What's the rationale for citing, um, low in, housing for low income seniors in this flood prone neighborhood?
That's a great question. And so for this particular site, um, there are a lot of considerations that, in, that the developer is keeping in mind. And we are as well. Um, but the city is using conservative projections for planning purposes based on the work of the New York City Panel on Climate Change. It is worth noting that sea level rise projections are expected to rise here. However, over the next three decades, technology is likely to advance that would help reduce the flood risk. It's also worth mentioning that we're aware of projects that the Army Corps is proceeding with, including construction of jetties and reinforced dunes on the ocean side, and those are already underway. So these projects would establish multiple layers of resiliency, reducing the flood risk to the entire peninsula as well as to the project site. And new buildings throughout the floodplain are required to meet some of the highest resiliency standards in the country under ZCFR as well. And for this development, all interior spaces proposed would be wet floodproofed, anything that's below the, the base floodplain, and then any habitable spaces would be located at the second floor. So well above the design flood elevation. And for reference, the projects that we have seen come through in the Rockways have been close to public transit. And this project is also similar to that. So we feel that is appropriate here.
Well, thank you for coming armed with a, with a complete and thoughtful answer. There's obviously a lot to discuss there, but thank you for anticipating the, the question. One last question is the charter school. Would that be related to the church? The materials indicate that they're looking for an operator, but what's the plan on the charters? What's the, what's the rationale? What's the vision? What's the hope for on the charter school?
Sure. Um, I know the applicant's still working with a, a number of providers to decide. I'm not sure if there would be a connection with the church, but I can have them speak more to that.
Okay. Thank you.
And now to Commissioner Raffershad.
Thank you. Uh, looking at the plans, I was just curious, has the applicant been in contact with DOT with regards to creating a drop off or a loading area for school buses and even with the senior housing building? Cause looking at the layout looks very tight. Bring cars in. Uh, the other question I had was with regards to the heirs program. I know HPD is looking to suspend the program, I guess, come July. Is there any concern from the applicant to meet the deadline set forth by HPD?
Sure, I can answer the second question first. Um, this airs program is a little bit different from the privately financed errors that are, will be suspended in July. So these errors units are financed through the Sarah program and they're subsidized. So this, these will proceed and they'll be good to go. Um, but as far as your questions about traffic, um, the EIS was completed and a conditional negative declaration was issued. We did find that there were traffic and pedestrian impacts. So the applicant is working on a restricted declaration um, in order to provide traffic mitigation measures as well as crossing guards on site.
Um, and I back at, hi everyone, Hala, um, the Queen's office as well, uh, just to add to Joy's, um, comment regarding DOT. Their school safety team also took, um, several looks at the site man and has been working with the applicant team specifically for drop off locations as well.
Thank you for your keen eye to look at the plan. You immediately identified one of the key issues that came up during our mental review. Other questions? Okay, this application is certified.
Thank you.
All right, the third item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in the Bronx Community District Six. Our presenter is Jutan Horseman.
Great. Uh, good afternoon, Commission. So this is a presentation for the St. Joseph's 1.49, 1, 1949 Bathgate Avenue Rezone. Next slide, please. This project is by St. Joseph's Apartments LLC, which is an affiliate of the Association of the New York Catholic Homes, uh, which is the Housing Development Office of Catholic Charities of New York. Catholic Charities develops affordable housing and has partnered with other faith based nonprofit groups to redevelop underutilized church owned sites for affordable housing. The site is located in the Tremont neighborhood of Community District Six in the Bronx. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone from R6A to R7D and a zoning text amendment for MIH. Next slide, please. For context, the site indicated in red is nearby a number of major institutions in the central Bronx, including the Bronx Zoo, Bronx Park, Fordham Plaza and Fordham University, which are approximately a mile away. The site is, has relatively good public transit being a block from the Tremont Metro North Station. And with the BD lines approximately half mile to the west and the four train about a mile to the west. And the two five train about a mile to the east, which is just out of the image. The site also has several bus lines that run along Webster Avenue, Tremont Avenue and Third Avenue. The site is served by a number of parks, most notably the 15 acre Tremont Park Southeast of the site. And then 127 acre Katona Park, less than a half mile to the southeast. Next slide, please. The area around the site has a mix of uses with attached two to three story attached homes as well as six to eight story multifamily buildings to the north, which is zoned R6A. Some light manufacturing and commercial uses along the Metro North Line, which is zoned M11. And a vibrant commercial corridor along Tremont Avenue to the south, which is zoned C45X, which is a R7X equivalent. Next slide, please. The development site is currently zoned R6A, which allows mid density residential uses. The site is bounded by Bathgate Avenue to the east, 178th Street to the north and Washington Avenue to the west. The image also better show the proximity to both the Metro North Station and to the west and Tremont Park to the southeast. Next slide, please. As noted at the beginning of the presentation, the site is being developed by Catholic charities under partnership with several faith based nonprofits with a mission to redevelop underutilized church owned sites with affordable housing. You can see in the top photo, the St. Joseph's Church, which was built in 1898. The original Roman Catholic Church provided seating for approximately 1,500 people, but over time parishioners dwindled along with the frequency of mass and other services. In 2015, the church closed its doors and relocated their services to a near, nearby parish, the St. Simon's Stock, which is about five blocks northwest of the development site. The site was demolished in 2019 and 2020, as seen in the bottom photo. The church site also had a four story rectory building and three story convent, as well as an open area that contained a garden and grotto that had been used for certain outdoor events. Additionally, you can see the six to eight story buildings immediately north of the site. Next slide, please. Looking northeast towards the development site, you can see the former church and rectory building in images one and two. And slide three, the multifamily building immediately north of the development site. Next slide, please. Looking northwest towards the, towards the development site, you can see an image for that there is about a 20 foot grade change running along 178th Street with the slope, streets sloping downward toward Washington Avenue. In image six, you can see the two story Methodist church immediately to the west of the site. Next slide, please. The applicant intends on developing the site with a 287 unit building that would be 100% affordable and provide a mix of supportive housing. The proposed development would contain 130 units supportive housing and the remaining 147 units would be for low income housing ranging from 40 to 70% AMI. Do the approximately 20 foot grade up, grade on the site, uh, and you can see it in the rendering here. The eastern side of the development fronting Bathgate Avenue would have a base height of 60 feet before setting back 15 feet and rising to a max height of 90 feet. Along the western side of the development fronting Washington Avenue, the proposed building would have a base height of 85 feet before setting back 15 feet and rising to a max height of 115 feet. The entrance to the development will be along 178th Street, which is here in the center of the drawing. Next slide, please. This image shows the proposed entrance level floor. The applicant intends to provide 140 units of supportive services, which would be provided through two building operators. The Catholic Charities Beacon of Hope Program would provide 70 studios for individuals with severe mental illness. And New York Foundling would provide 60 total units. Forty units will be for youth aging out of foster care and will consist of 25 studios, 10 one bedrooms and five two bedrooms serving 45 tenants. They will also manage 20 units for individuals with developmental disabilities with 15 one bedrooms and two, five two bedrooms for a total of 35 tenants. There will be offices on site for both building operators. The proposed development would provide an approximately 10,000 square foot landscaped inner courtyard that would provide private open space for the tenants, which will include both active and passive spaces, such as a turf area for children's play and different types of seating and gathering areas. Next slide, please. In order to facilitate the development, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone from R6A to R7D, as well as seeking a zoning text amendment for MIH options one and two. Option one requires 25% of the residential floor area be provided as affordable housing for households and an average of 60% of AMI with no unit exceeding 130% of AMI. As part of the 25%, 10% of residential floor area would be provided for households at 40% of AMI. Option two requires that 30% of the residential floor area be provided as housing affordable to households at an average of 8% AMI with no unit exceeding 130% of the AMI. Next slide, please. So under the proposed rezoning from R6A to R7D, the applicant is seeking to develop an 11 story, 287 unit, 100% affordable housing development that provides supportive services. The proposed rezoning would allow a net increase of 146 additional units. Thank you.
Thanks, Jutan. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Um, well, first I salute the developers for focusing on a constituency with real needs in our city. And, um, doing so while not, uh, wrapping the, the building, at least as it, as it's depicted here in the usual garment of affordability. Uh, I'm just wondering why, uh, why a consideration of, uh, option two MIH when it would clear, it seems clearly to be a, uh, option one scenario.
Um, I think the developer could speak more to that when they're talking about their financing, um, when we come back for hearing.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, um, we've seen buildings like this with two operators in the past where they attempted to sort of manage the two populations and in some cases keep them separate or have separate entrances. It would be great. I don't know if you could speak to this or when they, they come back to us, um, speak to how they plan to manage. You know, the, these two populations, which I imagine might be a conflict at times. And it's a sensitive, uh, set of issues when you bring, I mean, they have turf and kids play areas and, and mentally ill adults. So um, if they could, uh, speak to that, that would be helpful.
Commissioner Marine.
Jutan, nice to see you. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question concerning about the building that, first of all, I, I'm, I'm sad to have seen the church go only because it was recommended for landmark status and it never was approved. Um, so unfortunately we lost another beautiful church in the Bronx. I do realize that affordable housing is needed. I get it. I understand the archites is doing the job, but we're losing some of our most beautiful churches. There is a, a building that's being constructed. I don't know what the status is at this point because I'm looking at a Google photo of a building being constructed in 1947, which will directly abut the 1949 property. There is, there appears, appears to be some space and I'm not sure if that's the second phase or they're continuing with the building between the 1947 and 1949 property, um, that appears unbilled. So I'm just curious as to what the condition will be where this building abuts the other property. I'm interested in seeing that. I also would have found that, um, based on the population, why the AMI is at the higher end of the spectrum? That's pretty interesting. Uh, otherwise, and I like the fact that there's a courtyard in the center, kind of protects the, the, the population and it keeps them in a safe haven. and it keeps them in a safe haven and being able to be watched by their checkers while they're in the program. So other than that, I have no comment.
Great, and we'll make sure to get you feedback before prehearing.
Thank you, Jutan. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Barney.
Oh, thank you. I just had one comment on the design. And on the, well, first of all, are there any plans of the upper floors? And the reason I ask is, when I'm looking at the 178th Street facade, you know, what seems like a perfectly good building gets rather undone by this lobby design, which seems to be out of scale with the rest of the building. And I'm just wondering why they've done that. Is there something on these upper floors that requires it? Or could it not be scaled down a bit and more consistent with the rest of the design? So if they come back with the upper floor plans, it might be helpful.
We can make sure to get that for you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. The application is certified.
Okay. Just moving up a few blocks, the fourth item on the agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in the Bronx Community District Six, and Jutan will again present.
Good to see you all again. Good afternoon, Commission. This is a pre-hearing presentation for the Arthur Avenue Hotel rezoning. Next slide, please. This project is by 2461 Hughes Associates and is located in the Belmont neighborhood of Community District Six in the Bronx. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone from R6, the C24 overlay, to a C61 district and an R6 to a R6 with a C14 overlay, as well as seeking a zoning text amendment for Mih. Next slide, please. For context, the area has a number of major institutions and destinations proximate to the proposed rezoning area, which is identified in red, including Fordham University, New York Botanical Gardens, Bronx Zoo, Fordham Plaza, which is located along Fordham Road and is also a major commercial corridor and transportation hub in the Bronx, as well as St. Thomas Hospital and the Belmont Little Italy neighborhood immediately to the south. The Belmont neighborhood is home to the Bronx's Little Italy, which also contains the Belmont Business Improvement District and is well-known for the number of quality Italian restaurants located in the area. This area is more than just a local destination, but is also a regional destination with a number of institutions, businesses, and restaurants for people visiting Bronx. Next slide, please. The proposal is seeking a zoning map change that is split by Tickerown Park. The northern lot, the northern area has Arthur Avenue to the west, Hughes Avenue to the east, and 18th Street to the south. The area contains nine zoning lots, seven of which are owned by the applicant, and contains a total of 20,500 square feet of land area. The two lots now owned by the applicant contain 7,000 square feet of land area. The southern area is of an existing restaurant fronting Arthur Avenue and a parking lot fronting the Hughes Avenue side of the street. Next slide, please. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone from R6 and R6, the C24 overlay, to C61, which has a R72 equivalent for the northern portion, an R6 to an R6, the C14 overlay, in the southern portion. The southern portion of the rezoning area is extending the existing commercial overlay along 187th Street, 20 feet to the north to cover the existing restaurant, which would bring the currently non-conforming use into conformance and allows the owner to seek a sidewalk cafe. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing two buildings within the development area. The building at the corner of Arthur Avenue and 188th Street would be a 146-unit hotel that would have a base height of seven stories before setting back 15 feet and then rising to 13 stories. The residential building will be at the corner of Hughes Avenue and 188th Street and contain 56 units. The building would have a base height of four stories before setting back 15 feet and rising to seven stories. There will be 156 parking spaces located within the cellar and ground floor levels with street access on Arthur Avenue. Both the hotel and residential entrances would be on 188th Street. The ground floor is designed to allow for about 1,400 square feet of retail in two spaces and 1,900 square feet of community facility to further activate 188th Street. The development will total approximately 122,700 square feet and would max out the C61 zoning district for the 6.0 FAR development. Next slide, please. Here's a ground-level streetscape rendering of the proposed buildings. The applicant is also seeking a zoning text amendment for Mih. The applicant is seeking options two and four, which is known as the workforce option. Under both Mih options, the proposal would result in 17 Mih units. Next slide, please. On January 19th, Bronx Committee Board Six had a public hearing and passed a resolution recommending the project, 17 in favor, zero opposed, and six abstentions. The borough president sent a letter supporting the proposed development on February 24th. Next slide, please. So to sum up the project, the applicant is seeking a rezoning to our C61 that would permit a 146-unit hotel and 56-unit residential building, along with a zoning text amendment to provide mandatory inclusionary housing. I want to point out that we received 10 letters of support, which includes the Belmont bid, Montefiore, New York Botanical Gardens, Bronx Zoo, and Fordham University, as well as a number of local merchants that were shared in your commission packages. Following up on several questions the commission raised at certification, speaking to the location and use that was raised by Commissioners Marin and Knuckles. This is a private application for a proposed hotel to an area of the Bronx that has a need for a hotel due to the neighborhood having a regional draw. The applicant will be speaking more about the location at the public hearing. Speaking to the bulk that was raised by Commissioners Marin, Ortiz, and Knuckles, the applicant will talk to the bulk from their needs perspective, but from the Bronx Office perspective, the site has a large park immediately to the south, which allows for light and air circulation. The current C6 zoning district could allow a 180-foot, 18-story building if the applicant were to build out a max height factor building on the site. The C61 district has a maximum height of 135 feet or 13 stories. Additionally, it's important that the site has Mih, which requires an upzoning. With the site being R6 today, the C61, which is an R72 equivalent, is the next step up, which ties into the question regarding the shadows on the park, which Bernie raised, Commissioner Bernie raised, which the EAS analyzed, there will be some shadow on a varying amount of the northwest portion of the park during the May to August window, from about 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, which is in the mornings of the longest days of the year. The applicant team will speak more about a vendor for the hotel, which was raised by Commissioners Rampershad, Capelli, and Ortiz. The applicant team will be prepared to speak to the rents in the area and how it relates to their seeking the workforce option that was raised by Commissioners Marin, Knuckles, and Deleuze. The applicant team will also speak to the design of the building, including the need for the curb cut along Arthur Avenue, the parking on the ground floor, and how the rooftop rec space above the first floor will impact residents, which were questions raised by Commissioners Rampershad, Ortiz, Bernie, and Levin. Thank you.
Thanks again, Jutan. Questions from the commission? Okay, well, we will save our questions when we see this at a public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you all.
All right, the fifth item on the agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning and zoning text amendment in the Bronx Community District One. Our presenter is Manny Legarres.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. 261 Walton Avenue rezoning. Next slide, please. The applicant is the My Haven Gateway LLC, and they're requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone the project from M1-4 to R6A zoning district within an MX-13 to R8AC24. They're also requesting a zoning text amendment to appendix that of the zoning resolution designating the rezoning area as an Mih area. The project is located in the Lower Concourse area of Community District One in the Bronx. Background on this area, the Lower Concourse has historically been manufacturing. And over the years, there's been development in planning and also development. The Lower Concourse rezoning in 2009 was approved by the City Planning Commission. This was to facilitate the construction of new residential and mixed uses in a 30-block area. In 2015, the mayor, as part of his state of the city, stated that he is committing $194 million in capital investment to this area to create jobs, to strengthen the infrastructure, and to provide housing. And another project in 2017 that was approved by the City Planning Commission rezoned an area one block away from M21 to R72C24, another mixed-use development. Next slide, please. The development site is approximately 25,000 square foot irregularly shaped lot. It contains, well, it's on a block that is bounded by East 140th Street to the north, Walton Avenue to the east, East 138th to the south, and Girard Avenue to the western boundary. It currently contains a vacant, formerly self-storage use that is vacant due to a fire. To the immediate north of the development area, we have an air conditioner contractor. And just north of that, we have a furniture supplier. Across Walton Avenue have two-story light industrial buildings. And to the south, you have a gas station. To the west of the development site and across from the major Degen Expressway, I have a block with a self-storage facility and a large parking area. Transportation, mass transit in this area is very good. You have the number four and five subway lines two blocks away at the Concourse and 138th Street. Also, the bus service is good. You have buses traveling north-south on the Grand Concourse and also east-west on 138th Street. And the project is within the transit. So, next slide, please. Here we have other projects, and I mentioned the 30-block rezoning that was part of the Lower Concourse. That's highlighted in the red dash line. These projects are, they are approved, some are finished, completed, and others are seeking permits. Next slide, please. The area map, this is showing you the industrial nature of this area with the low-rise, hot-look coverage of buildings here. Next slide, please. The photo on the upper left is the vacant six-story building on the development site walking northeast along Girard Avenue. And also the photo on the right-hand side that gives you a northeast view of Girard Avenue and the right. The one on the bottom is you facing southwest from the site. Next slide, please. And these are views from Walton Avenue facing southwest. Again, the six-story building inside is on the right. And the one on the bottom is the northeast view of Walton Avenue, seeing the low-rise nature of the industrial uses at this location. Next slide, please. Your existing, the existing and proposed zoning, the area is zoned M14, R6A, and again, it is within the MX-13, and MX-13 allows your residential, commercial, community facility uses. However, the applicant is rezoning to the R8A because it would allow for the 12-story mixed-use development that he is proposing for this site. Next slide, please. The floor plans, the one on the left, the cellar floor plan, indicates that the applicant is providing two parking spaces, and that will be along Girard Avenue, which is a parking area. One in the center is your residential, which is sandwiched between the commercial uses and the one on the right, the layout of the apartments, the one-bedroom apartments, also some bedrooms, something, but it's just on the second floor. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of what the proposed building is going to look like. The height of the building is 120 feet after a setback at the maximum base side of 105 feet. It would contain 200, I'm sorry, approximately 181,000 square feet total floor area. Out of that, there will be 162,000 square feet of residential floor area and the remainder, which is approximately 19,000 square feet of commercial at the ground floor level. The applicant has selected option one, which is 25% at or above 60% of AMI, and that will count for 48 minutes. Next slide, please. This is a slide that was requested by Commissioner Marin at the review session. Provided this street view at his request. Next slide, please. The community board recommendation, we did not receive a recommendation. I called the office, still haven't received one. We do have the borough president's recommendation, which was to approve the project. Next slide, please. Please go back one slide. Sorry. I just want to add before I take any questions that the applicant has provided a letter, which has been included in your packages stating that they've reduced the number of units. It was initially 206 residential units, and that has been reduced to 190 units. And this was done at the request of the Bronx Borough President, who wanted to see more two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. In addition to that, we have received correspondence, and that should also be in the package from five persons who reside within this area, and they are in favor of this proposal. Now, are there, I'm sorry, I'm ready for your questions.
Thanks, Manny. Vice Chair Knuckles.
I think, I'm just curious, Manny, do you know why? Or have you attempted to find out why a community board has not weighed in on what is, you know, a pretty significant project and a clear departure from a lot of the development that's going on? Although, it's, you know, it's a trend of the future, clearly. I'm just curious as to why they haven't weighed in on it.
No, I don't know why they haven't. I understand from the Bronx Borough President's office that they haven't submitted a few of these recommendations. We're still trying, they're still trying to find out what's going on. I'll defer to Sean, who might have additional information on this.
I would just note that it is concerning, the board did hold a hearing, and they did vote. We're currently working with them to try and get them to submit their.
I'll just share Sean's comment that it's always troubling when a community board doesn't submit a recommendation because their input is so helpful to us. Commissioner Marine.
Well, I was going to state the obvious, which you all have stated. It's very disturbing. This is not the first application that this community board has not made comment on. There's been a couple of others in this community board where they've been silent, and it's kind of disturbing. I understand that there was an issue with the board and the jail location and the dissertation that they went through to get to where they were going, but not providing a response is not healthy either in terms of, you know, the vision for the community. I do appreciate the fact that I see the lower end of the spectrum of AMIs. And Manny, one thing that I would say is, you know, this is a very challenging site. I wanted to ask a question because on the, from what I can see, right between the BP, which is on the corner of 138th, and this site, there's a street. Is that street existing? Is that street, or is that a mapped, non-built street?
I can find out for you.
Okay. The second thing is that, you know, the site is a little bit challenging. I appreciate the view down Walton, but we also have the Girard Avenue, which fronts right onto the Major Degen Expressway. We also have that interior street that goes, I'm going to say east, and then parallels itself up, makes itself perpendicular up north, that encapsulates the back of the building, the entire back of the building. I'd like to see what that experience is going to be, both on the Girard Avenue side towards the Major Degen Expressway, as well as that interior street that exists there. Is that going to be treated as an interior street? Is it in fact working as an interior street? What's that view back there? So that's also interesting to understand. And if we can get a breakdown of the number of units by bedrooms and AMI, that will be very helpful.
I guess we do have that breakdown. The apartment distribution for studios is 47. One bedroom is 67, two bedroom is 57, the three bedroom is 19, for a total of 190.
190?
Yes.
And the AMIs on that?
Well, the AMI for the area is approximately 21, 25, $29,000 per year. You want the AMIs on these units, right?
Yes, please.
This will be families that, you know, 60% will be low of AMI. I can get specific numbers.
Nice. If you can please get the specifics on the unit breakdowns and the AMI, that would be very helpful. Thank you, Manny.
You're very welcome.
Commissioner, please.
Hi, Manny. Thank you. Yeah, I raised this concern during the review session. You know, we see about 19,000 square feet of retail here in what by every indication is a very weak market environment. You know, surrounded by major roadways, which, you know, are uncomfortable to cross and serve as barriers. Surrounding neighborhood that, as you've noted, is you know, manufacturing in nature with few residents. And, you know, basically a side street that is single-sided, you know, in its, in its retail offerings if this were to be built. When you drive, when you sort of take Google Street View up and down Walton, you know, there are major gaps in the pedestrian environment that would make it really uncomfortable to walk to this location, even if you're not crossing some of the major highways. So, you know, really, I need to understand the developer's rationale for 19,000 square feet of retail at this location. You know, as you know, I, I'm a retail consultant, and generally, you know, we would say you need about 2,000 residents to support 19,000 square feet of retail. That's not what they're getting here, and this is a low-to-mod income building. So, you know, I think we all, so incumbent upon us to make sure that we don't overbuild our retail and end up with vacancies. You know, I do know that the response I typically get when I say this is that, well, it can be a community facility. You know, we also know that there's not a limitless supply of community facilities to go into this space. So, you know, why are we doing this as opposed to creating more housing, which is actually what we need? I, I absolutely need to understand that to feel comfortable with this application.
Commissioner Ortiz, I did convey that information to the applicant, and they were aware of it since they did attend the November 16 review session. They have a response for you, and that'll be given at the Wednesday's City Planning Commission public hearing. Also, one of, another commissioner had asked the, why not community facility? So, they're going to respond to these questions at the public hearing.
Commissioner Ortiz, the one, the one thing I would add, you know, while, while today the surrounding area does not have a significant amount of residents, we, we did show on the map earlier, and this is an area where we went through the rezoning process of the lower concourse. Now, that's been a little over 10 years ago, but we are now seeing significant residential development. Some of it that's under construction now in the area. So it is a changing area. And I think leaving the option of the overlay was the rationale behind it.
I think, I mean, if I could press back upon that, because I, I hear that again and again. But I think, you know, as, as planners, we need to think rationally about where retail wants to be and then support those areas. You know, this is not a visible street. Retail doesn't want to be on what feels like the back, and this feels like the back. You know, we want to be creating places where, you know, we have existing concentrations of retail. This is 19,000 square feet of what would be for the foreseeable future fairly isolated retail offerings and for the foreseeable future potentially vacant. So, you know, I, I think we have to take all of that into consideration and, and step back and say, does Walton make sense to support retail? Should it be a wonderful street that you walk down and there are residents on the ground floor? That's fine, too. Your retail doesn't belong everywhere, nor does it want to be, nor can we support it as a city. So I think it's a really, you know, big issue, and this is just a case, a test case for a conversation that I think needs to happen.
A conversation that we can easily continue on Wednesday with the applicants there making their case as this is a private application. Other questions? Okay, we'll see this on Wednesday at the public hearing.
Okay, the sixth item on the agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment and a post referral follow-up for an authorization in Brooklyn Community District 6. Our presenter is Jonathan Keller.
Good afternoon. Today, I will briefly go over through Huntington Street project and the community board and borough president recommendations out of Wednesday. Next slide. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment and a waterfront authorization. Next slide. The project area is located within the southwest Brooklyn IBZ, and the development site is along the banks of the Guanis Canal that sits underneath the Smith and Ninth Street F and G Station and across from the Guanis Neighborhood Plan's proposed rezoning area. Next slide. The applicant is seeking a zoning map change from an M2-1 district to an M2-3 district. The existing M2-1 district would require more than 250 spaces be provided. Given the site conditions, including the irregular shape and high-water table, providing these spaces would be extremely challenging and quite cost prohibitive. While the districts allow the same uses and floor area ratio, the M2-3 district has no parking requirements. Next slide. The applicant is seeking an authorization to modify certain dimensional area and design requirements for the WPA to overcome site planning constraints. These constraints include the applicant site-specific programming of public amenities that seeks to provide a diverse pedestrian experience and activating key components of the shore public walkway while providing flood-resilient construction and stormwater management. Next slide. I'll quickly walk you through waivers and modifications being sought. The applicant is seeking to increase the maximum permitted grade change to allow for the tiered planted grading along the bulkhead, which provides both a diverse pedestrian experience with different views and vantage points along with salt-tolerant planting that will provide onsite retention of stormwater. Next slide. The applicant is seeking to reduce the minimum planting area requirement from 50% to 26% due to the design goal of activating the waterfront through programmable space in the lifted grove area, including the activation of the area with the proposed commercial space. And a reminder, there would be additional planting area provided adjacent to the shore public walkway as part of the future connection to the MTA lot to the south and the private space adjacent to the proposed building. Next slide. The applicant is seeking to waive the minimum dimensions for tree pits to realize the design goal of the lifted grove where the proposed stone dust pavement would extend over the root ball of the trees. Next slide. The applicant is seeking to waive the screening buffer requirement for a 10-foot portion of the elevated grove between the public access area and the edge of the proposed building to allow for the seamless continuity between these spaces and would provide a visual connection between these elements and the canal. Next slide. Lastly, the applicant is seeking to increase the maximum permitted height of a fence in the shore public walkway from three feet to three and a half feet to prevent falls. Next slide. If approved, these actions would facilitate a new six-story, approximately 100,000-square-foot light manufacturing and commercial building. Next slide. Any new waterfront open space with a superior design because of greater design flexibility to respond to the unique site conditions. Next slide. The community board voted unanimously to approve the project with conditions that the negotiations with the council member are fruitful and for the applicant team to come back to the community board after approval and as the design of the project and waterfront advances. The borough president voted to approve with conditions echoing the community board's desire to see dedicated space for makers and nonprofits, et cetera. Other BP conditions focus on resiliency and sustainability measures incorporated into the building. Hiring practices and a request that the city consider advancing non-motorized boating access along the Guanis Canal. And before I take your questions on this last point, I'd like to share a couple thoughts in light of Guanis rezoning and the waterfront access plan. We appreciate the BP's recommendation to look at the entire canal for new access points. Not every site, as you can imagine, can incorporate every community goal or amenity. Depending on site conditions, subsurface conditions and infrastructure, lot size, and the building uses and waterfront design, boating access or other amenities may not be possible or advisable to include. At 300 Huntington, while this is outside the Guanis WAP, the applicant team has worked closely with the community and the Brooklyn office to incorporate goals and principles identified in the WAP. The trade-off on this site, which is shorter than other canal sites close to a drawbridge and street end outfalls, is between performative stormwater management and a flexible programmable space, which are also top priorities in the community. So across the canal, boating access is one of the many goals identified by the community for the new canal waterfront open spaces. We agree in its importance and hope to see increased boating access along the canal. And we are also hoping new open spaces accommodate a number of other neighborhood goals and principles like performative design, flexible active programmable space. And to that end, in the Guanis WAP, which we hope at some point we can share with you soon, we propose to incentivize a menu of amenities, including boating access. And as each development comes to the Brooklyn office for certification, waterfront certification, that is, these amenities will be encouraged and sought after and advocated for by the department and the community. Next slide. And so with that, I can take your, any questions you have now. I'll note at certification, there were a few questions from Commissioner Deloos, and the applicant team will be here on Wednesday to answer them. They included how the site relates and how it was thought about in relation to the sites to the north. In particular, the open yard adjacent to residential and emission stack far, far away from residential. The, they also, Commissioner wanted to hear from the landscape architect if there are other green elements in the building about CSOs or other infrastructure, and how does this respond or not to the Guanis Canal Conservancy's master plan. Commissioner Bernie asked about stormwater capture in the street end and noted Sponge Park's apparent inability to fully capture all the stormwater. And the designers will also be here to be able to speak to that. So with that, I can also answer any other questions you may have today.
Thanks, Jonathan. Commissioner Dwight.
Jonathan, there was some comments from the borough president's report also about in case of emergency access to the water with the vertical bulkheads going, going in place. So, there's any response to that. And then for the applicant, there was a request that they put some kind of declaration, you know, requiring them to live up to their commitments, perhaps a perhaps some kind of, in conjunction with the IDA or some other benefits. If, if, if the applicant could speak to that, I would appreciate that.
Sure. I think they can, they, they will have their lawyers and other applicant team there on Wednesday, and they can speak to both of those.
And, and again, I found those safety issues that, that were brought up somewhat interesting and, you know, looking to the future, especially with active boating usage on it. So we want to make sure that there's a way in case of emergency to, for people to get out of the water, people to get in the water, whatever it might need to be done.
Thank you. Commissioner Levin.
I guess, thank you. Jonathan, there's a phrase in the community board's recommendation that I'm curious about, and that is that they want to see a more creative public amenity along the promenade. Do they have any detailed concerns about the design of the promenade, or is there any?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, I attended that, the hearing, and I know also the applicant team can, has been in discussions with the community board and can also take this on, too. I think some of what, you know, we've heard also broadly from the community board and the community discussing this project, but also others, was about arts and, and just the creative nature of the public open space. I think that may have been partly where that's coming from. I think the space, the elevated grove, has been designed to allow for programming. And I think the community board really was asking about the, the, that space and, and thinking more specifically about how that can be used for creative purposes, but
Okay, so, so it's not so much about the, the authorizations, the modifications of the planting requirements and so on that are targeted for this?
No, I, I think it's more about, and, and again, the applicant team can be here, but the, the use of the space over time.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll look forward to hearing about the, specifically about the authorizations they're seeking to modify the
Yes, and you, and you had a question at certification about would a lot of these waivers be necessary? And, and I think the Guanis WAP, and I'd answer then, many of them would not be. And I had hoped that at this point in time, we would have already shared that with you, but
You could illustrate that for us, but not quite yet.
Yeah.
Coming, coming soon, I hope. Thank you.
Other questions? So we'll see this at a public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map, a zoning tax amendment in Queens Community District 7. Our presenter is Kathy Coe, and I'll note Commissioner Rampechow is recused on this.
Okay, good afternoon, commission. Next slide, please. This is 6819 Woodhaven Boulevard rezoning. It's a private application in the Regal Park neighborhood of Queens, Community District 6, and the applications for a zoning map amendment from the existing C81 and R4 districts to R6A and R6A with a C23 commercial overlay and a zoning tax amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area to facilitate a seven-story mixed residential, commercial, and community facility building. Next slide, please. And the proposed project area is located in Regal Park with frontages on Woodhaven Boulevard, 68th Road, and Alderton Street. The area is generally served by buses, and the closest Long Island Railroad Station and the EMFR subway station are located in Forest Hills, approximately one mile northeast of the project area. The project area is located directly east of St. John Cemetery, and about one mile northeast is Forest Hills, Hill Stadium, and a cluster of big-box retail stores, including Trader Joe's, is located about half a mile south of the project area on Metropolitan Avenue. Next slide, please. And the proposed project area is located in a C81 and R4 district, mapped in 1961. And most of the area is comprised of two- to three-story residences with a few six-story residential buildings in the immediate vicinity of the area. Low-rise commercial uses and auto-related businesses such as car washes and auto shops line Woodheaven Boulevard, and the area to the east is zoned, R4BN, is mostly characterized by low-density residential. Next slide, please. The, this tax map shows the proposed project area, which includes lots 2 and 35, and they're outlined in the dotted black line. And the proposed development site is outlined in red and includes only lot 2. Next slide, please. And here to show a bit of the local context, the project area is bounded by Woodhaven Boulevard to the west, which is a wide 150-foot street divided by a median with two-way traffic running north and south. 68th Road is to the south, and Alderton Street is to the west, I'm sorry, east, both of which are 60-foot-wide narrow streets. And Alderton Street intersects with Yellowstone Boulevard, and Yellowstone Boulevard is a wide street measuring 80 feet. And currently within the project area are a non-compliant six-story residential building on Lot 35, which is the eastern part of the site. It was built in 1969, is approximately 70 feet tall, and contains 51 units. The development site, Lot 2, has frontage on Woodhaven Boulevard and 68th Road and contains a floral shop, a forest, and a one-story auto repair shop. The northern half of the subject block, which is not included in the rezoning area, include attached two-story residential buildings. And the block south of the project area includes a gas station and a six-story, sorry, 60-foot-tall six-story residential building and another similarly non-compliant 70-foot-tall six-story building, which is located to the east across Yellowstone Boulevard. Next slide, please. And here we have some photos of the proposed project area. Photo 1 shows the proportion of the development site that contains a florist from Woodhaven Boulevard, and you can see the gas station that's located directly south of the, of the development site. Photo 2 is facing southeast on Woodhaven Photo two is facing southeast on Woodhaven Boulevard with the development site to the left. And photo three is a view of the development site facing east from Woodhaven Boulevard. Next slide, please. Photo four here shows a view facing east at the intersection of Woodhaven Boulevard and Sixty-Eighth Road with the development site on the left. And here you can see the existing mid-rise residential building contacts directly east and south of the development site. Photo five is a view of the development site facing northeast from the same intersection. And photo six is a view facing north on Woodhaven Boulevard with the development site to the right. Next slide, please. And here we have a few photos from Sixty-Eighth Road. Photo seven is a view of the development site where you can see the auto body shop. Photo eight is a view of the site facing northwest and you can see the cemetery just ahead with the development site on the right. And photo nine is a view facing west from Sixty-Eighth Road. Next slide, please. And the proposed development would consist of a new seven-story mixed-use building with a maximum building height of seventy-four feet. It would have total approximately ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-one square feet and an FAR of three point six. The applicant proposes approximately eighty-seven needs volume units, of which twenty-six would be made permanently affordable under MIH option two. There would be approximately eighty thousand square feet of commercial use, approximately six thousand, three hundred and forty-nine square feet of community facilities, both would be which would be on the ground floor and approximately seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-two square feet of residential use on floors two through seven. And the cellar would contain seventy parking spaces via a new twenty-two-foot curb cut on Sixty-Eighth Road with seventeen spaces on the surface parking lot for a total of eighty-seven spaces. Next slide, please. And here the proposed site plan shows a seven-story building that rises to a base height of approximately sixty-four feet before rising to a maximum building height of approximately seventy-four feet. And the building descends to one story in the rear and there would be a rooftop recreation area provided. Next slide, please. And here we see the ground floor site plan, which shows entrances to retail use located on Woodhaven Boulevard and access to residential and community facility uses on Sixty-Eighth Road. And the existing florist, which is owned by the applicant, would be relocated in the commercial space of the proposed development. Next slide, please. And to facilitate this development, the applicant proposes two actions. One is a zoning map amendment to change the existing C eight one and R four districts that are mapped in the project area to R six A with the C two three overlay comprising lot two. That would be a hundred feet deep from Yellowstone Boulevard and Alderton and Alderton Street. And this offers an increase to residential FAR on both lots. Residential use is currently not allowed in the existing C eight one. And the maximum residential FAR is point seventy-five in an R four district. So the proposed R six A district bumps this up to three point six with my age. And Lot Thirty-five is included in the rezoning area, but there are no redevelopment plans for this longstanding multifamily residential building. Next slide, please. And the application also includes a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area. And the applicant proposes the map options one and two. And the AMI for this part of Community District Six is roughly sixty-three thousand. Next slide, please. And here we have an illustrative rendering of the proposed development from the corner of Woodhaven Boulevard and Sixty-Eighth Road. Next slide, please. And here is a bird's eye view of the proposed development showing the existing mid-rise multifamily context and the wide span of Woodhaven Boulevard. Next slide, please. A land use committee meeting was held by Community Board Six on January fifth, twenty twenty-one. And on January thirteenth, a full board meeting was held and based on testimonies and discussions around the height of the proposed building, structural impacts of construction on adjacent properties, levels of affordability for the MIH units and transparency from the applicant during the construction and affordable housing fulfillment process. The board voted to approve the application with conditions. Twenty-eight members voted in favor and thirteen against. And the board listed the conditions of the approval, just listed here and which addresses all of the concerns that were discussed at the community board meeting and hearing rather. And the applicant subsequently provided a letter agreeing to all of these conditions. Next slide, please. And a public hearing was held by the Queens Borough President on February fourth, twenty twenty-one, and we're still waiting on the submission of the recommendations. And at the hearing, the Borough President asked questions about jobs generated as part of the proposed development. And the applicant stated that they would be hiring building service workers and would be hiring locally for local contractors. And that completes the presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks Kathy. Questions? Okay, then we will see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The eighth item on the agenda is a post-referral follow-up of an authorization in Staten Island Community District Two. Our presenter is Roselle Leader.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This project is located at thirty-five Pierceall Street. Next slide, please. It is a private application returning from post-community board referral review. It seeks an authorization to waive the requirement that in an R three X district, a two-family residence must be designed with at least seventy-five percent of one unit's floor area located above or below the other unit. The authorization would allow the units to be located side by side. Next slide, please. The project site is located in the South Beach neighborhood of Staten Island's Community District Two. Next slide, please. The project site is located on the east side of Pierceall between Olympia Boulevard and Quincy Avenue in an R three X district. It is improved with a one and a half-story residence and a detached garage. Next slide, please. The applicant proposes the demolition of the existing structures to construct a new detached two-family home with a side-by-side arrangement. Proposed FAR is point five nine. The house would have two stories and an open cellar area. According to the applicant team, locating the living spaces above a visible cellar and garage is typical in a federal flood hazard zone. The applicant also proposes design elements that would help meet the findings of the authorization, which include that the development is compatible with the scale and character of the surrounding area and the design does not give the appearance of a semi-detached building. Next slide, please. For example, the home is proposed to have a pitched roof to give it the appearance of a one-family home. Next slide, please. The design also has one front door with entrance to the two units from the interior vestibule and one garage door. Next slide, please. The applicant also submitted a drawing of the proposed streetscape to illustrate how the proposed home indicated by the shaded building would be compatible with the scale and character of existing homes in the area. Next slide, please. Community Board Two recommended approval of the application, twenty-seven in favor, one opposed and no abstentions. Next slide, please. In summary, this authorization is being sought to allow construction of side-by-side units upon meeting the findings. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Roselle. Questions? Commissioner Cirillo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Roselle. Just a question, when this pre-referral, there was an issue in when I did my research on this location that the borough had issued two separate addresses for this site, this property without the understanding of what obviously the attempt is and the application is today. The staff had indicated at that time that they were directing the applicant to revise their plans to remove and to have the house numbers removed to go back to the topo office and clear it up. So there's nothing in the briefing materials about the status of that. I do know that obviously the community board, you know, voted to support this application. But there's obviously concern at the borough that there aren't two addresses linked to this property. That could be very confusing from a public safety point of view and a variety of other point of view. So I just just wanted to get an update on what the status with the applicant was and what efforts had been made to sort of correct the concerns that that we had raised.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, the applicant did submit the revised drawings showing that there is no that there is now just one address. And we asked that they make this update at the community, at the topo office as well. They have not indicated that they did that yet and what I can do is just get back to them and ask them to confirm that they have made the change at the that they're working with topo Bureau to make the change.
Yeah, that would be, I mean, I think that would be very helpful. I just would be concerned that we're approving applications that when we know is really one address and we're approving an application where we know there's two and we have obviously the the let's just say that we're in a position to hopefully ensure that this gets done and that the record is clear and accurate, most of all.
Absolutely. And as I said, the drawings that we have at City Planning does have the one address, but absolutely we'll make sure that the applicant team tells us they have worked it out with topo.
Thank you, Roselle. Thank you.
Commissioner Marine.
Roselle, thank you for the presentation. I just have one question on the on the flood plane of this neighborhood, having worked out here and knowing the requirements for open basements. On the basement of this home, we'll just, it'll be just for two parking spaces. What will happen with the balance of the space and is it wet-proofed, wet-fluff-proof, dry-fluff-proof? Can you talk a little bit more about that?
There is no living space under at the cellar level. It's for parking and as I understand it, they can store items there. But I don't have right now what method they're using for flood waterproofing. We can get that information if.
Thank you.
Other questions? And I will say that we will get the information about the two questions that were asked and we'll schedule this for a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hey, the ninth item on our agenda is a post-referral follow-up of a non-Ulerp certification in Manhattan Community District Six. Our presenter is Anthony Lichuga.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this is an application by the owners of six oh nine through six fifteen Second Avenue for a joint MTA CPC certification of a transit easement volume that relates to a site in the Kips Bay neighborhood of Manhattan Community Board Six. The applicant obtained a phase one joint certification from the CPC and MTA on November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. The certification required a transit easement volume to be provided on the site. The applicant now seeks a phase two joint certification from the CPC and MTA that will determine the location and type of easement volume required. Obtaining a phase two joint certification is a prerequisite to the applicant obtaining a building permit. Next slide, please. Development site occupies four lots fronting Second Avenue and an adjoining single lot fronting Thirty-third Street. The development site is located on the block bounded by Third Avenue to the west, East Thirty-fourth Street to the north, Second Avenue to the east and East Thirty-third Street to the south. The development site is zoned partially C one eight A and C one nine A. The whole site is located within the special transit land use district. The neighborhood is made up of a mixture of older walk-up buildings mixed with large-scale residential developments of up to thirty-six stories, such as the Kips Bay Towers, which can be seen to the southeast at the bottom right corner of the map. Barton Park is located two blocks to the north on Second Avenue. Immediately opposite the site on Second Avenue is a privately-owned public space associated with the mixed-use development at three hundred East Thirty-fourth Street, which is a thirty-six-story primarily residential tower occupying the entire Second Avenue frontage. The six train is located a quarter-mile west along Thirty-third Street. Next slide, please. The site is mostly vacant at present with a single-story building occupying the portion of the lot fronting East Thirty-third Street. A hair salon currently occupies that building. The applicant plans to develop the site with a seven-story mixed-use building containing ground floor commercial, thirty residential units above and a cellar space. Next slide, please. The site sits within the special transit land use district. The section of the zoning resolution was established in nineteen seventy-three in preparation for the Second Avenue subway line. Provisions of the special district enable the MTA and CPC in conjunction to identify locations where transit easement volumes are required for subway-related use and public access to the subway mezzanine or station. Next slide, please. During phase one, Community Board Six and the MTA recommended an easement at the site and the CPC issued a transit easement certification indicating that an easement volume is required on this site. This phase one outcome has compelled the applicant to pursue the current phase two application in consultation with the MTA. Phase two gave the MTA the opportunity to design the easement volume in conjunction with the applicant before returning to the CPC to certify the easement volume. Both Community Board Six and the MTA have submitted letters of approval for the proposed easement volume. Next slide, please. The proposed transit easement volume colored in pink on the site plan would be located on the southeast of the project area, adjacent to and parallel with the street line of Second Avenue. It would have twenty-seven feet, eight inches of frontage on Second Avenue and a depth of forty feet, parallel with Thirty-third Street. Next slide, please. The easement volume, again here in pink, would have a height of thirteen feet, six inches above grade and a depth of ten feet below bedrock, but no less than sixty feet. The volume is designed to contain enough space for a lobby entrance to the station, leading to two elevators. Next slide, please. The applicant seeks a joint certification from the City Planning Commission pursuant to zoning resolution section ninety-five zero four one of the location and type of easement volume required on the development site. The MTA has provided their approval letter as part of this joint certification. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have now.
Thank you. Questions from the Commission? Commissioner Levin.
Thank you. Yeah, oh, looking at this makes me realize we've seen a bunch of these before and they're usually in much larger buildings and the easements seem, you know, pretty reasonable and small and like no big deal in the scale of bigger project. But this is a pretty small building. It's just thirty units and this looks like it's taking a big bite out of the potential retail frontage they might have. Does the MTA, what's the, this isn't our business, but I'm just curious, what's the financial arrangement for this? Does the MTA purchase the easement from the property owner? This is a big tax on the property owner.
Yes, they do. So until a date at which the MTA decides that they will utilize the easement, the applicant is allowed to operate it as a commercial space. At the time when the MTA does wish to take it, the property owner will be paid by the MTA for that space.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Jason, I will ask for a vote to send a letter to the Department of Buildings certifying that both the New York City Transit Authority and the certifying that both the New York City Transit Authority and the City Planning Commission have jointly approved the location type and volume of easement most compatible with the proposed development of the zoning lot. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll send a letter. Thank you.
All right, moving on to future votes. Staff prepared reports for consideration on March 3rd, 2021 for 1099 Webster Avenue, the Harlem Open Door Cluster Projects, 5025 Barnett Avenue, 69 Adams Street. Also scheduled for a vote on March 3rd are is 285 Stanley Avenue and 279 Stanley Avenue, both in Stanley, Community District One, or 48, 452, and 454 Robinson Avenue, West Castor Place, both in Stanley, Community District Three, and then Altman Avenue and St. Andrews Road in Stanley, Community District Two. Right, not seeing any raised hands or sort of frantic waving on those, on those future votes. All right, so for post-hearing follow-ups, on 431 Concord Avenue rezoning, I'll just convey that the applicant is working on a comprehensive response to the issues that were raised at the hearing and in public review and will be sharing materials at a future review session date. If there's any further questions on that project, we can take those questions now and get those. Okay. The Acme Smoked Fish Gem Street rezoning. Alexandra Paredes Diaz is here to discuss with some updates.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Following up our public hearing held last Wednesday, two weeks ago, we received the Borough President's recommendations and we would like to present them to you. Next, please. As the Borough President held a hearing on December 21st and recommended to approve the application with modifications. Next. That prior to considering the application, City Council took great, great commitments from the applicant to clarify how it will establish a legal enforceable mechanism to monitor industrial use floor area compliance, restrict innovation making uses, establish clear access to the street, and limit access or retail floor area. In response to this recommendation, the applicant has stated that also following a community board's recommendation, they're seeking to the IBA program. Recommendation number two encompass a series of modifications to the bulk requirements within the large-scale development, a special permit, that in consultation with CB1, local residents and elected officials, and amount of floor area, it's redistributed throughout the site. Before going into the details of what this will entail, we would like to say that DCP is concerned on the impacts of the urban design objectives and the open space quality within the development, if these are adopted. And also, the applicant has stated that the proposed modifications impose constraint in their compliance of the energy code for the commercial use floor plates. So their recommendations entail, next. Since it's moving floor area around the building, I'm going to walk you through first the intention of providing more floor area on the lower portions of the building, mainly facing Banker Street and Jean Street, enlarging the portions of the building that encompass from the second to the sixth floor. These modifications, as you can see in the side plan, will also cover some of the open space provided in the ground floor and the emphasize the entrances at street level. In order to do that, the floor area that is used to enlarge this floor plate is coming. Please, the next slide. It's coming from the upper floors. Also to provide less floor area, the BP now is proposing to remove one floor, to reduce one floor along Mesro Avenue from the six-story portion of the building, but also, next. It provided four different recommendations or options to remove that floor area that meant to be used in the lower body. So setting back, this encompasses setting back further by 216 feet than the ninth floor, next, or setting back the sixth to ninth floor up to 54 feet, but also a combination of either, next, setting back the ninth floor to 266 feet, or next, setting back the floor six through the nine by 66 feet. This is also the Borough President making these recommendations based on the community board's concern on the transition of heights from the proposed building to the context. Next. The proposal is to reduce to one, to reduce one floor along Wyeth Avenue. And that will, that is the complete move of floor area that the Borough President is proposing. Next. Last but not least important, the Borough President also recommends for City Council to obtain resilience, great commitments from the applicant to memorialize the incorporation of resilience and sustainability measures, coordinate the installation of break guidelines, curcots, and intersection with the related agencies, maintain an agreement with the related agencies regarding the intersections, engage with car sharing companies to lease multiple spaces within their parking garage that is proposed to be provided within the building, and retain Brooklyn-based contractors and subcontractors. That concludes my presentation. This is a summary of the proposed element. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Bernie.
Okay, thank you, Alexandra. So, I mean, clearly, I think the Borough President's recommendations kind of reflect a concern that I share about the rather ungainly bulk and massing of this building. And I'm not saying that I agree 100% with everything the Borough President's recommending, but did the applicant have any response to the comments that we made at the time? Or are they just plowing along with the same building massing that they proposed initially?
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, the design of the building hasn't modified in the last days and the comments that they shared with us is, the way that they are proposing the dimension and the location of the floor plates are actually thought in terms of the, not only the energy code, but the efficiency of the commercial uses that could be provided along all those floor plates. So we haven't seen any updates since.
Well, you know, I don't buy the energy code argument. If anything, I'd say this building looks to be extremely inefficient from an energy point of view. But I do share the Borough President's concern about the overall bulk and massing of the building. And they're not prepared to even consider it. They just want to stick with what they have. Is that the idea?
I think that what they want is to maintain the amount of floor area in the most efficient way within the building. Any additional modifications to the building are outside of my.
Okay, no, I understand. Well, okay, all right, that's disappointing.
Yeah, you know, we will have loved to also have this conversation during public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Knuckles.
Well, I think my question has been answered. I wanted to know whether or not the last slide depicting a rendering of the building reflected the changes that Alexandria, Alexandra had described. But that's still the building that was initially proposed.
Exactly.
I, at least for me personally, I'd like to see going forward a juxtaposition of the building proposed initially and then with the modifications that they indicate that they're going to make. I'd just like to see them side by side to see if there's any real discernible difference in the way the building looks.
Just to be clarified, Sheriff, the applicant has not agreed to make any of the changes. But what we can do is, at this point, the applicant has just had conversations with our Brooklyn office. We can ask them to respond in writing to the recommendations of the Borough President, which again came in after, unfortunately, came in after the public hearing. And so we didn't have the opportunity to question the applicant directly then. But Alexandra, if you could follow up with them, that would be helpful.
I will.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, well, I'd like to couple that with a response to the comments that Commissioner Bernie and Commissioner Knuckles had. And the Borough President has laid out one possible route to addressing the fundamental design concern about the building, but there may be other ways to do it as well. I think Commissioner Bernie's overarching comment about building design is the real thing to ask the applicant to respond to, using the Borough President's responses, one possible avenue, but there might be others.
We will communicate to the applicant when he comes back to you.
Are there comments or questions that we should follow up with the applicants on? Okay, we will come back to a subsequent post-hearing follow-up review session.
Have a good afternoon.
Just if there are any further questions on 135137 Bedford Avenue, the HPD New Penn Udap, and the Sudum Street Resign. Also for post-hearing follow-up, 86 Fleet Place, further questions on that? All right, so we have Governor's Island rezoning. There were letters and materials in your package and Allison Brown is here to discuss further.
Hi, sorry, before, excuse me, before Allison jumps in, this is Eric Botzardt, Deputy Director of the Manhattan Office. Just wanted to provide a brief introduction. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're back today for a post-hearing follow-up again on the application for zoning text and map amendments sought by the Trust for Governor's Island, for Governor's Island. Following the public hearing on February 3rd, we've returned to you to discuss letters that have been submitted by the Trust for Governor's Island and in response to questions and comments posed by the Commission. And most recently, on February 16th, we discussed with you the Trust's intention to revise their proposal and modify the special district zoning text in response to comments that have been received during public review. The Trust has filed their revised application and today we'll walk you through the proposed modifications as well as discuss other outstanding items. Following the presentation, both Allison and I will be able to answer your questions following her presentation. Thank you. Allison?
Thank you, Eric. Next slide, please. So to recap, the Trust for Governor's Island proposes a zoning map and text amendment in order to achieve 4.275 million square feet of development within the South Island development area to allow for a variety of uses such as academic and cultural institutions, research centers, commercial office space, hotels and hospitality and community facilities, and to enlarge and enhance the South Island open space and pedestrian accessibility. Next. At today's post-hearing follow-up session, I will be presenting letters provided to the Commission from the Trust for Governor's Island, the revised text amendment the Trust has filed with the Department of City Planning in response to comments and concerns raised throughout the Uler process, and remaining concerns raised by the City Planning Commission at past review sessions, namely parking. Next. Two letters have been provided to the Commission from the Trust for Governor's Island. First, a letter to the Commission responding to questions raised at the post-hearing follow-up session on February 16th. Topics covered in this letter include financial projections, ferry transportation, existing tenants, public waterfront access, and the RFP schedule. Second, on Friday, the City Planning Commission received a copy of a letter from the Trust to Community Board One. The letter responds to many of the concerns raised in the resolution and covers several topics such as heights, permitted uses, and the prohibition of residential use. Where possible, the Trust has revised their application to address concerns raised the raised in the Community Board Resolution. In the next few slides, I will go into detail on the text revisions that were filed by the Trust on Friday, February 26th. Next. The overall permitted heights of buildings within both the development site and the open space subarea has been reduced. Within the development site, a reduction from the previously posed 300 feet to 200 feet, 250 feet, excuse me, is now proposed. And within the open space subarea, previously heights were permitted up to 35 feet and are now proposed to be reduced to 25 feet. The permitted heights of mechanicals on top of buildings is also being reduced from 60 feet to 40 feet. Base heights have been reduced, including the permitted heights of any building or portion of building within 150 feet of the historic district as well as base heights adjacent to the public park. Next. The waterfront esplanade adjacent to the Eastern Development Zone will be widened 15 feet to match the width provided on the western side of the island. Next. In order to provide greater clarity and consistency surrounding how heights are measured, instead of measuring height from the average finished grade surrounding a building or structure, height will now be measured from a fixed datum. The provisions of the zoning for coastal flood resilience would continue to apply to developments within applicable areas on Governor's Island. Next. Uses within, the uses permitted within the open space subarea have been revised. Use group 15, such as amusements, have been eliminated altogether. Use group 12, which permits eating and drinking establishments more than 200 persons, has been revised to use group 6, allowing such establishments of less than 200 persons. And finally, use group 13, which allows uses such as theaters, is now permitted only in circumstances where they are open to the air. Next. Finally, the revised text modifies all discretionary actions reviewed by the Commission to include a 45-day referral period to Manhattan Community Board One. This applies to authorizations regarding commercial uses, location of certain uses in proximity, bulk modifications, and the provision of fences. Next. The Commission has raised concerns in regards to the amount of parking provided in the South Island. In response to Commission questions and concerns, the Trust states that they are committed to keeping the island prioritized for pedestrian and bicycle traffic. They note that they carefully manage and limit access times for vehicles to further limit pedestrian and vehicle interactions. The Trust maintains a mixed fleet of approximately 50 vehicles, half of which are electric. The fleet is used for the purposes of maintenance, operation, and security. The Trust states they believe this fleet will need to be expanded to support ongoing growth and they anticipate that a large academic, institutional, or cultural user will also require their own operation vehicle fleets. The Trust has also provided clarification that the proposed parking would not be utilized by commuters coming to the island. As part of the suite of text revisions, the trust clarified that the total amount of parking permitted on the South Island is 300 spaces, rather than specifying an amount per development zone. However, recognizing the commission's concern, the department believes further text revisions are necessary to reduce the amount of parking. The department's suggestion is that the commission reduce parking from 300 spaces to 200 spaces. The department feels this reduction is reasonable while still being able to support the trust's operation and future tenant needs as described. This reduction, coupled with the department's continued involvement in the design and development of the South Island through the RFP process, would ensure an appropriate amount of parking. Next. Finally, the vote for this project is scheduled for Wednesday, March 17th. I will now welcome Eric Botzardt, Deputy Director of the Manhattan Office, back to join me in answering any questions the commission might have. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the commission? And with thanks to Allison and Eric for that presentation.
Did we lose the chair? It looks like we might have lost the chair. So Vice Chairman, I'm going to say that you can call on yourself and take over the meeting until we can get.
I'll call on myself with the admonition to not talk too long. This wasn't mentioned in the earlier remarks, but I nonetheless have a, just had a question about it. Uniform services for the island, i.e. police, fire, sanitation. From, obviously, they'll come from presumably Manhattan and/or Brooklyn, whatever would be most expeditious. But how would that work? I mean, it's, or will there be a presence of such services on the island?
Thank you, Commissioner, for your question. So the trust has stated that today they do work closely with agency partners at FDNY and NYPD to coordinate all emergency response efforts. And both agencies maintain a presence on the island during the season and year round for day-to-day needs. The trust has also stated that they will be actively working with FDNY and NYPD in planning for future development on the island. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, to some extent. So there is a, there's a presence on the island now. But presumably, you know, in the coming years, if there was additional development, that that presence would need to arguably grow or be enhanced to some degree.
Right, correct. And the trust is actively working with those agencies and planning for that future development.
Thank you. Is the chair back on?
I do not see her now.
Okay. Well, are there other questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Levin has her hand up.
Yeah, I was actually kind of hoping some of my colleagues would have things to say. I've certainly used a fair amount of airtime in previous review sessions about this application. And I've just got to say, well, for one thing, you know, we've got some movement from the trust. I certainly agree with the direction of the department on the parking, although I continue to be mystified by the analysis that says so much parking is needed. And all of that has gotten me to focus on just the sheer scale of what is proposed here. 1,363 hotel rooms. Now, this is the maximum that's studied in the EIS, and I understand may not be what gets built. But 4.2 million square feet, it's really the hotel rooms that really snapped my head back. And I went and realized this is, this is bigger than the Roosevelt Hotel, bigger than the New Yorker Hotel. And even with the reduced building heights, you know, we all try to frame this against things in our own daily lives that we understand. I pass by the evolving, emerging Columbia-Manhattanville campus, where those new buildings are almost complete. And what's proposed here is bigger than that. Those buildings are plenty big, and they were carefully negotiated, and they are surrounded by a dense urban environment. This is standing out in open space. So it's, yeah, I want to believe in the trust's vision for the climate center. I want to believe that it will develop into the kind of public-serving jobs, creating climate-improving projects that the trust is describing. But what they're really asking us to do here is to trust them. And I don't think I have enough understanding of what is being proposed to be built to be ready to vote in favor of it. I wish I were closer along, because I think, I think the trust is headed in a good direction. But there's too much that we're having to take on faith here.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I could just, just respond briefly. The density that was proposed, just to provide some background, we have obviously worked with the trust over some time in the development of their application. And the, the density, the square footage that is proposed is something that, you know, we, I think we took a hard look at over time, you know, really to ensure that that amount of density could be appropriately cited on the island in a way that still protected the public's interest in ensuring that there was, you know, generous open space. You know, as you've heard from us previously, a real priority for us was to ensure that the public would be able to move through those development parcels from the ferry and the esplanade into the central open space. And, you know, from the department's perspective, we do believe that the urban design controls, the zoning controls that are part of the application can appropriately accommodate that density on the island. You know, I think that it's, you know, we're not disagreeing that it's a significant amount of development and that, you know, the, the parcels themselves could, under a full build-out scenario, you know, result in, you know, a more urban feel for, you know, for portions of the, of the parcels. But, you know, the controls were designed with flexibility to allow buildings to spread out or to be concentrated in a way that can, you know, preserve an open feeling on certain parcels and have development concentrated on others, or to have a more uniform condition across the development parcels. But we definitely hear your, your comment.
Eric, I appreciate that, and I have deep respect for the urban design thinking that goes on at the department. That's one piece of it. The other piece of it is what the use is going to be, and we don't know. We have two scenarios here, one of which is largely university and the university and research option, which I understand is what the trust is hoping to have happen. But we're also giving them the flexibility that could lead to the mixed-use option, which has 1.7 million square feet of office space without any controls on what kind of office space it is. So, you know, no amount of urban design is going to be able to deal with that. I mean, I think we have to pay careful attention to the use that's going on here as well as the urban design.
Apologies to the commissioners. My iPad decided that it needed to take a break just as the questioning started. Commissioner Bernie?
Welcome back. Yes, I'd certainly concur with Commissioner Levin's concerns. And what I don't really understand is why the process has taken this shape. Because, you know, here we are, sort of accepting for the moment, who knows why, that we need 4.2 million square feet, and then talking about building heights and base heights and rooftop mechanicals, which will be completely irrelevant when we actually find out what's being built there, because those things are one way for an academic building and a very different way for a hotel building. So, and so as Commissioner Levin points out, we're asked to sort of put our faith in the idea that we need 4.2 million and then just letting the trust go off and decide what to do with that 4.2 million. I don't understand why there isn't an RFP process now, or even preceding an RFP process, a healthy discussion about the future of Governor's Island and what it should be. And then having reached consensus on that, an RFP that results in a use which you can then design for and apply all of your urban design skills to that. It seems to me we just have the cart before the horse, and that's why we're having these misgivings.
I would respond to that, Commissioner, by noting that, as Eric had stated, we looked at what was an appropriate level of development on a site this large and at a relatively low density. We then also looked at what kind of building envelope would be appropriate. Recognizing that an island that's going to be developed over the years would, if it's going to exceed those parameters, would need to go through another discretionary review. But again, we worked to establish parameters that we believed would lead to development on the island. And the notion of suggesting that the trust would have to go through Eular and again is not a way to incentivize what we think is appropriate development within the envelope. It's a fundamental recognition of how major projects can get developed. And it does require less control over the micro specifics and instead a focus on the broad parameters of the form with respect to height, with respect to street wall, with respect to open space.
I don't think I was suggesting to Eular processes. I was just suggesting that that Eular process be at a later stage in the development of the thinking of what goes on, on the island. That's all I would suggest.
With respect, Commissioner, that would be a much riskier proposition in attracting a major research facility to come, as opposed to saying we have determined that this is, these are the appropriate parameters for development on the island, and then looking to entice responsible academic institutions and search centers to come, knowing that they can proceed within parameters.
Well, I don't see that risk myself, but I guess there was a heads.
And Commissioner, I would, I would also just add that, I think one thing that we do appreciate is that over the time that we've been involved with the trust, they have, I think, you know, very much narrowed and elaborated on a very specific vision for the island. You know, when we did first begin working on this, you know, I think there was a much more expansive view on, you know, what could be located here, you know, from the trust's perspective. And, you know, as you've heard more recently, the focus on, you know, academic research, climate-related vision for the island is, yeah, I think has been a welcome development from our perspective in helping us to, you know, be able to understand the nature of development that, you know, that is desired to be located here and, you know, would presumably be seen as responsive to an RFP in the future.
And again, apologies for having missed an important part of the discussion. Are there other issues that commissioners want to put on the table?
No, I would just want to follow up with, it's not a rejoinder to Eric. I would, I would, I would, I would be happy to buy on to the university research option here. It's the, what happens if that fails that really concerns me. Because there are no, there are no restrictions in what we're approving here that would, there are no guardrails. There's no opportunity for us to get another look at it if they are unable to make that work and move into something that is more problematic from a planning standpoint.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Eric.
I was going to just point to, I think, the, you know, the commitment that has been made by the trust to return to the department and to the commission in the development of the RFP process and evaluation of responses as a, I think, a very important backstop to ensure that development taking place on the island is consistent, would be consistent with what the commission's understanding was, you know, at this time in the consideration of the application. You know, that being said, there, you know, I think that a reasonable outcome, you know, could be some combination of uses here, a research institute, some commercial aspect, the hospitality, hospitality component, and those, you know, could reinforce one another as well on the island, you know, in an appropriate manner from our perspective.
Echoing Eric's point about the importance that we place as a department on our role in working on the RFP, the ability of the commission at any point to, not just the department, but the trust, which it, which itself is also a city entity to be able to return, gives me the comfort that this proposal is a well-considered one, one that has benefited from the years that the department has been working with the trust, and one that I believe gives us the best possibility of attracting exactly the type of climate research facility that the trust hopes to pursue or intends to pursue. Okay, with that understanding that there may be disagreements about the path that the trust chose to pursue, I will then turn it back to you, Ryan.
Okay, so other post-hearing follow-ups, I'll just, I'll read them off and, and, you know, raise your hand if there's any further questions. We have zoning for coastal flood resiliency, city-wide text amendment, and then it's associated resilient neighborhoods, Garretson Beach, resilient neighborhood Sheep's Head Bay, and resilient neighborhoods Old Howard Beach. Not seeing any further questions on those items. That is the end of our agenda.
Okay, then we will see each other on Wednesday morning. I look forward to that.
Okay.
Bye.
Take care.